I have no way of knowing.
We'll call our meeting to order. First item on the agenda is invocation by Pastor Don Tejema, Mountain Valley Church of God. Then the pledge of allegiance will be headed by Andy Falk. Would you please stand?
Love and heavenly Father, may we just meld our hearts together for a moment and not make this just a perfunctory type of activity, but may we truly stop and admire You for a moment. And thank You for the wonderful blessings that You have given us. Father, we also ask You to please bless this council with the wisdom to keep this wonderful growth that's going on in our town managed well. We pray for all the infrastructure to continue to service us well. We lift up our first responders to You and pray Your protection upon each and every one of them. And for the heads of our departments, Lord, we just ask You to please give them great wisdom in being very good managers of the people underneath them. Your hand of blessing truly is upon this valley, and we ask it to please continue in Your name, Father. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank You, Pastor, and thank You, Andy. Appreciate that. Okay, we move on then to roll call. Diane?
Mayor Skug.
President.
Vice Mayor Nye.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Mallory is absent this evening. Councilmember Marshall.
Here.
Councilmember Grossman.
I'm here, too.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Our scheduled announcements and presentations, I'm not sure if our college president is here yet. Okay, we'll move on to B. Honor and Remember Paulette Martone. Paulette, are you here?
I'm here.
Oh, great. Come on up.
I haven't done this before.
You'll have to use the microphone, Paulette. And this is one of those mics where you have to kind of talk into it.
Hi, my name is Paulette Martone, and I'm a Gold Star Mother. I want to thank you all for having me here this evening. The first of May begins the month that we honor and remember our fallen heroes, recognizing our fallen military across the country each day in May. Honor and Remember Arizona Chapter invites the community to participate in the upcoming events. Please come out and support and honor and remember our fallen military heroes of Arizona. On May 23rd, we will have our first annual Honor and Remember Memorial 5K Fun Walk Run, recognizing Arizona's fallen military heroes. This will be on the Iron King Trail in Prescott Valley, starting at 10:00 a.m. Registration is only $20 per person, and you can register online at www.honorandremember.org under the store, or late registration will be $25 after May 11th, and this will include a T-shirt. Our first annual Honor and Remember Memorial Day event will be held in the Prescott Valley Civic Center, beginning on May 18th and ending on May 25th at 2:00 p.m. We will have key speakers, including our own Mayor Skug and Congressman Gosar. There will be over 300 American flags on display with the name of a soldier attached. Now, I would like to include some people that are helping me in this. My husband, Augie Martone, who couldn't be here this evening. Jasmine Crowell, another Gold Star Mother.
Jody Smith, who is also a Gold Star Mother.
Edna Robb, who couldn't be here, are all, they're all Gold Star parents. I would like to recognize Larry Tokowski for all of his help in this. He's the Prescott Valley Town Manager. And Laura Sutton, who's our Public Relations Manager for Honor and Remember. I want to express the need of community involvement, knowing that we hope that other states will follow our lead in making Memorial Day all about our fallen soldiers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paulette. Appreciate that. We move on then to Student of the Month. Mike?
Once again, we're honored to recognize a student in our community, as we do every fourth week of the month. So this is a special day for the council, of course, and for the Prescott Valley Rotary and Bradshaw Mountain High School, because it gives us a chance, this is fairly rare in our time, to recognize youth in our community while competing with all the other things going on. But we feel this is very important and very special to us. And tonight, the Prescott Valley Rotary Club, the town of Prescott Valley, in collaboration with Bradshaw Mountain High School, want to recognize an outstanding student in Prescott Valley. And she has become, I guess, somebody to recognize because of her achievements at school, of course, her involvement in the community, academics, leadership skills, all these things that the Bradshaw Mountain High School staff, faculty, and the principal have recognized. So we want to make sure she remembers that she is somebody that's special and recognizes the importance of school and being a part of not only the school, but also the community. So we're here to recognize Andy Falk tonight. Congratulations, Andy. And this is a place where I usually will just use a laundry list of information to kind of recognize what Andy has done. Obviously, it doesn't really touch the surface, but it's one way to at least address some of the things that we feel is special about Andy. She obviously goes to high school, and one person, I don't think I've heard a student say this before, feels that the high school experience is enriching, is something that she doesn't feel she could obtain otherwise. So I think it shows the value of high school and what it can bring to students. She is a swimmer, and I think that's something that's always nice to be in the desert area north of, you know, the high desert, of course, as well. She's served as captain of the swim team. And I can't tell you if she looks, I don't see that tan, so I think that just throws me off a little bit. But she has been involved with other things as well. I'm involved with another service organization, and she's attended the He O'Brien Youth Leadership Seminar through the Optimist Organization as well. She's a Link Crew member, and I think Court Miner, the principal, can give us some information about what the Link Crew is. And she is part of HOSA as well, a Future Health Professionals Organization that she's been involved with. And she does work and contribute to the town as well through the Mountain Valley Splash and Prescott Valley Events Center. So she does spread the wealth, so to speak, in terms of her involvement. She indicates she's been on the principal's list every year since she started high school. And again, I think this is a tribute to Bradshaw Mountain High School, as well as her to take that commitment that high school is an enriching experience. I'm going to let Court Miner, the principal of Bradshaw Mountain High School, give you a little idea as well. Hopefully, I haven't said everything I can say. I know I haven't. Relative to some of her academic achievements. Court Miner?
Thank you, Michael. Mayor Skug, Vice Mayor, council members, members of the audience, my name is Court Miner. I'm the very proud principal of Bradshaw Mountain High School, and I'm here today to talk about Andy Falk. Mr. Whiting said some nice things about her, but I think she epitomizes a well-rounded student at Bradshaw Mountain High School. You could call her a bit of a bookworm because of her academics and all the AP courses she has taken and maintained a high GPA, and I'll get to that in a minute. You could call her an athlete for her four years and her contribution to the swim team and leading to her being a captain her senior year, her involvement with our HOSA, our health organization on campus, and her finishing third in state, in first aid and CPR presentation, as well as the HOBE opportunity she had with the Youth Leadership Program. She's also involved in Link Crew, and to me, this is where the leadership qualities in Andy come out. Our Link program is a program where juniors and seniors are recruited by our teachers to find the best juniors and seniors out there, and usually we have about 80 to 85, 90 of them. And they welcome the incoming freshmen, the eighth graders that are transitioning into the high school. And they meet all the students, and each Link leader is given 10 freshmen to keep an eye on throughout the year. And not only do the freshmen come to school and meet their Link leader, but they do a full day of activities, icebreakers, they show the kids where the bathrooms are, where the cafeteria is, they get the kids' schedules, they get the kids off to their classroom, and they just make that first day of school so important and not so scary for the freshmen as they walk on campus, because now they already know, 85 to 90 juniors and seniors, you know how important it is to know upperclassmen, as well as the 400 freshmen that they spent the entire day with. And Andy's been involved with that. With this class, this was a very strong senior class. She finished with a 4.537 GPA, and it still only put her in rank of third of the class. But again, that shows you her commitment with all the athletics, the after-school stuff that she was doing, as well as not letting her academics slip. And she will be one of our salutatorians to speak this year at graduation. So I'd like to introduce to you Andy Falk.
Mayor Skug, Vice Mayor, town members, audience, I would like to thank the Rotary Club. I would like to thank Mr. Miner and the rest of the administration and teachers at Bradshaw, and of course, my mom. Mom Liz. Thank you.
Well, we wanted to help you remember this day, and hopefully you will. We have a few things we'd like to give you. One is a certificate that kind of recognizes this special day for you, presented by the Rotary Club, town of Prescott Valley, and Bradshaw Mountain High School as the March Student of the Month. So please post this in a place where everybody will see this. We hope you do. And then we wanted to give you a paperweight that kind of commemorates, and you can take with you as you study, wherever you might be studying. I know you said you were looking at and hadn't chosen a place for higher education yet, so hopefully it's close by. But it's the Student of the Month Prescott Valley, Arizona paperweight, so hopefully it's in front of you all the time. And we do want to congratulate you for your achievements, and would you like to introduce your mother? I don't know if your mother would like to say anything, but apparently the parents have a great part to play in your development in school, and we thank your parents as well for helping you and assisting you in becoming a very good student and a Student of the Month for March. Would you like to say anything? Sure. As the mayor always says, you have 20 minutes.
I had no idea what I was walking into. She just said, "Mom, can you be someplace at 5:30?" So I'm dressed appropriately. Anyways, I'm so proud of her. She, you know, people always tell me I've done a great job with her, but really, she is a self-starter. She's a gem, and I've just been blessed with her, and I'm just so, so proud of her.
Congratulations.
Thank you for being here, and congratulations to you all. Okay, we move on to Yavapai Community College. Dr. Penny Wills is here.
First of all, my apologies for being a little bit delayed. I think you know where I was right before this, and I am not used to the traffic between Prescott Valley and Prescott and then trying to return, so delighted. No, I want to go ahead and first thank you for allowing us to be here. And when I say "us," it's myself, Penny Wills, the president of the college, of Yavapai College, and Steve Irwin, your district governing board member for Prescott Valley. We are so fortunate to have Steve as one of my bosses, but very, very fortunate. For those of you in the audience that weren't aware of where we just were, many of us here in PV witnessed something historic in that the faculty of Health Sciences of NAU and Yavapai College just concluded a three-hour, almost a four-hour meeting today to talk about new ventures, et cetera, stronger articulations, but also new programs coming to our area. So I was very pleased, and I appreciate your support. I can't say enough about Prescott Valley. As I like to say succinctly, "You get it." I just wrote to another person down in the Phoenix area, who will remain nameless, but has a lot to do with economic development, and talked about all the work that we've done together to host different candidate forums about connecting the dots. Education, dot, 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 economic development, dot, 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 quality of life. I am so, I feel professionally and personally very fortunate that you all get it. So just thank you for your support of the college. Today, what we'd like to do is to go ahead and give you personally, or distribute personally to you, and anyone in the audience that would like a copy of this, we have some extras here. Thank you, Sir. This is the first district governing board annual report from Yavapai College. Why I point that out is that usually when you receive an annual report from a college, it's not from your board. It's from the administration. This is not the administration, this is the board speaking, your elected officials. And I'd like to just walk you through this, and please, everybody, breathe a deep sigh of relief. I'm not going to read sentence by sentence. But I just want to point out some things to you and then open this up, because what our intent is at the college is to be sure that we visit every city council, town council, et cetera, at least twice, if not three times a year, to keep that dialogue going. And so I'm so, again, very appreciative that Mr. Irwin is with me today. First, a couple pages describes the district governing board members of 2014, and then on page three, I believe it is, if I'm counting right, no, it's actually page four, in my mind. Okay. Policy governance. We're one of the colleges in the nation that follows a different governance model, and we felt that we needed to explain that a little bit better. So we put this in the, well, they put it in their annual report. And policy governance is simply, according to the Carver Model, is simply this. They tell me, or they elect one person. I have that honor and responsibility as their president. And they give me end statements, saying, "Here's what you are expected to do." Some would call these goals. Others would say, "Hey, here's objectives." Here would be the mission. But quite honestly, you could take the college mission of any college. I hate to tell that dirty little secret, but you read one, and boy, you can almost write everybody else's mission statement. At Yavapai College, under the policy governance, there's distinct, there's three different ones. Education being the top priority of all the variations under education, credit, non-credit, the Family Enrichment Center to Ali, our Osher Lifelong Learning Institute, to the Contract Training under REDC, the Regional Economic Development Center. All that is under education. The second one is economic ends, and that has to do with basically supporting the efforts of all of our economic developers across this county. We provide them the data and everything. And then the community ends, social and cultural. So those are the three ends that I have to work towards. They typically will say something very briefly that says, "Here's," and I measured against those ends, "We don't care how you get there, get there and show progress." I can never reach Nirvana to say, "That's it. Boy, we've reached it." No, it's always a moving enhancement there. But then they can grope me in on executive limitations, where there's areas that they say, "Hey, we may need a little bit more clarification about some things." Typically, those have to do with finances, but other aspects as well. So that's how we work. We talk about the educational ends on the next couple pages. The chart that I want to draw your attention to is the student satisfaction. I really hope you'll look at that and enjoy it, because this is something that I'm so proud of with this college. We exceed the nationals on every one of these things, and we continue to do that. Something that I'm very proud of community colleges, that even with our student satisfaction surveys, et cetera, that we do nationally and participate in, community colleges will publish those documents on every one of their websites. For your institutions, don't. Same type of thing, but we're very proud of it, and we want the community to know how we're doing so that you continue to have trust in us or that we can garner your trust. That's it. The next thing is with economic development, I've made reference to that already. Two years ago, we reorganized at the college under regional economic development. You've probably heard about how Dr., or soon to be Dr. Alexandra Wright. She heads up that, the Small Business Administration Development Center is under that. And we have gone leaps and bounds. Gary Perattis, who you know here, is head of the PVEDF. He is so glad to see that component there. We do not lead economic development. No, that's the jobs of all the people in the different cities. But one thing that they typically don't have is the rich data mining that we can provide them, to be able to give them data to form their plans, to attract new businesses, et cetera, as well as do contract training, because a number of our people really do want to go ahead and continue in their careers, but how do they do it? The businesses don't want to lose these people, et cetera. How do they go ahead and do that training? We can provide that. The next thing is the cultural enrichment piece here, which is something that I'm very, very proud of, of all the different things that we offer the community all throughout the county. What you'll see on the pages at the bottom, select pages, is also the history timeline of your community college. That is fascinating. I am just so proud, and God, I'm honored that I'm, oh, God, I just saw this picture down here. Okay, didn't realize I was in it. Okay, makes you feel a little older that you're on the history timeline. Okay. Ownership linkage, as I said, something else that this board is to be commended for and will continue to do is that they did a survey, a survey of all of Yavapai County to say, "Hey, are we even meeting these ends? Are we doing this?" All right. You can see again on this page, on page 13, "YC Should Help Jobseekers." The high ratings there, and it breaks it down by whether it's the district, east, west, balance of the county, et cetera. "Should we prepare students for transfer?" Yes. "Should help attract new businesses to the county?" Yes. So this board took that initiative to say, "Hey, how are we doing?" And received a lot of good feedback on that. The next page is on the budget overview, and something else that I really hope you will be proud of this, of the college here. These are tough economic times. They're getting a lot better. I'm not making a political statement. We're coming out of that recession. You all have that down pat. You're prepared for it, et cetera. You know, and you've heard about the recent, the continuing reductions in funds to education. Something that I was very, very saddened to hear, in addition to that, is the 11 million that was taken away from the services that provide some protection or care for children and the amount of poverty. That link of violence against children under the age of five or even under the age of 15, it's very sad. And so you look at that, and yes, we protect the taxpayers, et cetera, but let's look at the taxpayers for tomorrow. There's only two ways to get out of poverty. Pretty Woman, which just celebrated whatever anniversary of the movie, Richard Gere, sure, yeah, that'd be great. Doesn't happen very often. And the other alternative is education. We've got to invest in education. So in the last four years, our big hit was right before I arrived in Arizona, where we are now reduced to less than 1% of our funding comes from the state. Essentially, it has been moved over to the taxpayers. This concerns me a great deal, but where I come in with the pride is the college went ahead and made significant reductions at that time in 2011. And three out of the four years, these past four years, we have not raised our property tax. It has been the same. By law, we have always had the ability to raise a 2% each year if we so chose. Three out of those four years, we did not. It can be cumulative. So technically, we could raise a 10% this year. Let me assure everyone listening and watching, we are not planning to recommend this to our district governing board. At the same time, we have reallocated everything that we can in these last four years internally. And if you talk about a college that is very much driven by data and efficiency and effectiveness, it's Yavapai College. So this year, I would not be at all surprised if we do go out for a 2% increase, because we are bringing in new programs that are needed. I think PV is very aware of the other programs that are on the horizon. We cannot stay still. Not that we have any type of, how would I say, mental situation here that we can't stand still, but no, we have to be vibrant. We have to be responsive to you, and we will always be committed to that. So we need, we're in a situation where we will need to go ahead and look at that to say, "What can we do?" Please be assured that we have reduced everything we can inside, as well as we had over $3 million of requests from our faculty and staff, saying, "These are pertinent." We have brought that number down to $672, or $70,000. And so we've reduced that from the $3 million down to that to look at, yeah, 670, we're really good. No, very, we've reduced that. We have done everything we can internal, and this is where we're looking at at this point. Let me end on two positive notes, very strong positive notes. Yavapai College Foundation is the best in the state for community colleges. I can't believe the commitment that our foundation has. And let me give you just an inkling of that. We raise more money per capita than any community college in the state, and second, an amount raised to all 10 community colleges in the Maricopa system. That is something that shows the commitment that the citizens of Yavapai County have, because we just selected, I think it's a year ago, the first alum to sit on that foundation board. So every one of those foundation board members have come to this community, fallen in love with this college, see what we offer this community. They're putting their money in this. So that is, I think, extremely strong. I also would like to just show you just the number, the back cover, "Yavapai College Makes Our County A Better Place To Live," and just what that statement is. This is something that, again, we asked during the board survey. So I want you to always be proud of your college. I have the honor of serving as your president. Now, it's not my college. It's yours, and I always want to earn your respect. So, Mr. Irwin, would you like to say anything? No, he would not like to say anything. But, Mr. Mayor?
I think Mr. Irwin should speak for 20 minutes.
Okay.
Give me a little bit of opportunity.
I'm sure I will not be 20 minutes. I can tell you, since I've been on the board, worked with the college and the community leaders and just the people. I live in Prescott Valley, and I speak to a lot of voters every day. And I've met with the mayor and the town manager over the city's, or the town's needs and wants, and I can tell you that the college takes your input very seriously. And all the committees that I've sat on and all the work that the college does is to one end, and that's to good, solid, strong education and help supporting our community.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Anything else, Dr. Wills?
We'll be glad to answer any questions, any comments you may have.
Questions? Questions, counsel?
Hey.
I think we can appreciate that you're doing an outstanding job.
Oh, you're very kind. Thank you. And appreciate.
Steve, congratulations. Thank you. Now we've got proclamations, Mayor's Day. Is Lloyd Weathers here? There he is. Can we meet you at the electorate? Dan, you have a, can you read the proclamation?
Yes, Mayor, we can. Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service, April 7, 2015. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs. And whereas participants in AmeriCorps and Senior Corps address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and nation, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century, and supporting veterans and military families, to providing health services and helping communities recover from natural disasters. And whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants serve in more than 60,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our communities' economic and social well-being. And whereas national service participants of all ages and backgrounds serve in Prescott Valley, providing vital support to town residents and improving the quality of life in our town. And whereas national service representatives, a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And whereas a national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Services shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, City of Service, and mayors across the country to recognize the impact of service on the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service on April 7, 2015. Therefore, be it resolved that I Harvey C. Scug, Mayor of Prescott Valley, do hereby proclaim April 7, 2015, excuse me, as National Service Recognition Day, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our town, and thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities.
Thank you, Dan. Do you got any comments?
Just quickly, I want to say, I do volunteer for groups, and we have AmeriCorps young people that we couldn't do without. So please pass our appreciation on to them.
Anyone else? How about you, Lloyd?
Yeah, so my name is Lloyd Weathers. I work with Arizona Serve. This is actually my second year as a national service member. Last year, I was actually placed at Yavapai College in their service learning program, which adds service elements to curriculum for classes and teachers that want to implement it, so that students can go out into the communities, get civic engagements under their belt, and kind of instill that positive education outcomes that we all desire for all our students. And this year, I'm the Vista Team Leader, which basically means I mentor the different vistas that are starting out here, and kind of provide guidance and feedback and training so that they can effectively fight poverty with different initiatives in Prescott Valley and throughout the community. And I want to thank you, Mayor Scug, and the Town Council. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Keep up the good work, Clyde. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, next one would be Fair Housing Month. Anybody here for that? There we are, Carmen is. Do you have that proclamation, Dan?
Yes, we do, Mayor. Fair Housing Month, April 2015. Whereas the Civic Rights Act of 1968, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act, and the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988 prohibit discrimination in the sale, rental, leasing, and financing of housing, or land, to be used for the construction of housing, or in the provision of brokerage services on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, disability, familiar status, or national origin. And whereas the 1968 and 1988 Federal Fair Housing Acts declare that it is a national policy to ensure equal opportunities in housing, and whereas April has traditionally been designated as Fair Housing Month in the United States, now therefore I, Mayor Harvey C. Scug of the town of Prescott Valley, do hereby proclaim April as Fair Housing Month in the town of Prescott Valley, and do hereby urge all residents of this community to comply with and show their support for the letter and the spirit of the Fair Housing Acts.
Thank you, Dan. Comments? None. Any of the council? I think, I hope you've met Carmen. She is managing a huge program at Town Hall. What we've done is, what, about $400,000?
Since 2002, and it's quite a substantial amount of money now. Thank you, Mayor Scug. Yes, the program has been in place since 2002, and it's helped over 80 people, challenged people, and needy people rehabilitate their houses. As town staff, I'm very honored to be able to accept this proclamation for all those in town staff and in the town of Prescott Valley that respect and, and honor the Fair Housing Act of 1968, which was a huge piece of legislation. And so, yes, it's quite an honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Carmen. What she's talking about is restoring below code homes of people with very low incomes. And that may mean what, insulation, new roofs?
Yes, health and safety hazards. We help provide disability access and code violations, and provide a safe and secure place for them to live.
Improving neighborhoods is what it does, especially where there's, where there's a problem. Thank you, Carmen. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Next one is the Parkinson Disease Awareness Month. Judy, come on up. Laura, are you leaving us? Okay.
Parkinson Disease Awareness Month, April 2015. Whereas Parkinson's disease is a slowly progressive neurological condition that affects more than 1 million people in the United States with a new diagnosis every nine minutes. And whereas the American Parkinson's Disease Association has sought to ease the burden, find the cure through research, patient and family services, education, and sponsorship through the network of chapters, information and referral centers, and support groups throughout the United States. And whereas the world, the nation, and the town of Prescott Valley observed Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month in April of 2015. And whereas the town of Prescott Valley recognizes the efforts of the Arizona chapter to raise funds and promote awareness to fight Parkinson's disease, thereby improving the quality of life for those living with the disease. Now therefore, I Harvey C. Scug, Mayor of Prescott Valley, in recognition and in honor of those who work with the American Parkinson's Disease Association, Inc., and their value to the residents of the town of Prescott Valley, Arizona, do hereby proclaim April 2015 as Parkinson Disease Awareness Month.
And for some reason, the original did not get here, and I don't have an explanation. But I think somehow we'll be able to get it here. We'll give you the copy to start with.
A stand-in copy.
Judy, you have any comments?
Thank you, Mayor Scug. I represent the American Parkinson's Disease Association in Arizona as their program director. And I'm proud to tell you, actually, that the Prescott area has really stepped up to the plate as far as Parkinson's education and support and resources. In fact, the largest support group, and certainly one of the most active, is right here in the Prescott area. And so we're really happy for the community's support, for our special events, for our educational programs, and certainly know that there is, and either's about, right here in Yavapai County, there's about 1,000 people affected by Parkinson's disease. So thank you very much for that recognition. We want to get the word out, and we very much appreciate it.
Thank you, Judy. And would you talk to Dan, maybe she can, you can tell her where to send it? Okay, now, we were supposed to have an Arbor Day proclamation, but we're going to have to table that till April 9. Next, we have communications, comments, and we'll start with Chief Gerald, and then go to the council for communications.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I come before you tonight because I want to share some things with you that it's actually really good news, and I think it's important that the council, and more importantly, the people in Prescott Valley, hear this news. The Family Violence Unit in Prescott Valley continues to lead the way in efforts to prevent domestic violence and support the victims that that violence breeds. Sergeant Jake Jackson, Corporal Mike Williams, and Detective James Tobin, among others in the department, worked tirelessly in these efforts. When the unit was formed, they created the Coordinated Community Response Team comprised of members from a variety of community stakeholders, such as educators, law enforcement, people from the medical field, counselors, therapists, and many, many more. It started with 30 members, and today has over 90. We have participated in the Yavapai County Fatality Review Team since August of 2013. And last year, we entered into a memorandum of understanding with Northern Arizona University to assist them with the development of a domestic violence prevention assessment. And our determination, or I should say their determination, and service to advocate for the victims of domestic violence is now drawing national attention. We have just been awarded the 2015 Arizona Attorney General's Distinguished Service Award for Leadership, in recognition of their outstanding contributions to victims and their tireless efforts on behalf of victims' rights and assistance. It's certainly the highest award that our unit has ever received. The entire unit, as evidenced by the Attorney General's Award, sets the standards for family violence units around the country. Detective James Tobin is a recognized expert in the area of domestic violence, and he has been invited to be a panel member or participant at the National Domestic Violence Fatality Review Initiative Training Conference in Florida this year, where he will be presenting on how to form a fatality review team. And Detective Tobin is here tonight, and I think he deserves a round of applause. The other thing that I wanted to share with you that I thought was, was a nice achievement for our area and our, our community. I was just recently selected to attend the International Association Chiefs of Police MacArthur Foundation Law Enforcement Leadership Institute on Juvenile Justice. The institute will have a broad immersion into the cutting-edge concepts and tools to improve our agency's response to juvenile offenders and at-risk youth, and help us to engage in effective collaboration on juvenile justice reform in our community. And the best thing about it is the International Association Chiefs of Police, it's a scholarship, it will not cost the people of this community one dime. Thanks for your time, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Congratulations, Chief. And Detective Tobin, keep up the good work. We appreciate that. Comments, Laura?
I do. I know you're all anxious to get the agenda item you're here for, so I'll just take a quick moment. I just want to remind you and invite you, to Saturday, here at our Civic Center, we will be finalizing our youth arts month, and we have our extravaganza. And if you've never brought your children for that, oh, shame on you. The ribbon cutting will be at 9:45, and festivities begin at 10:00. I mean, we have a petting zoo, we have Little Bo Peep, and we have thousands and thousands and thousands of eggs. So bring the children out to enjoy.
Thank you. Any other comments for the council? If there's none other, then we'll move on to our consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda will be considered to be routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. Unless discussion is desired on a specific item, it would be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. These include the approving of the March 5 and March 12, 2015 council minutes, approving the February 23 Board and Commission Selection Committee minutes, approving the payment for structured reports to the 2014 owner-occupied housing rehab program projects, approving the fireworks display contract with Raymond Pyrotechnics for the 4th of July celebration is for $25,000, department reports, monthly financial report, council investment report, and approving accounts payable. Council, want to pull any item, or do you want to approve it as a whole?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve all items listed on the consent agenda by electronic vote.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote? And mine, mine should be yes on there, too. That, that's missed. Okay. That is unanimous. Thank you. We'll move on then to new business for comment or review. And I'd like to move one up front, if I may, Joe, if you don't mind. Police chief has an issue, except he's got to go to a, to a conference, and he's got to leave tonight, and he's got to drive quite a ways to it. And so if, if it's agreeable to council, can we move item number H to the, to the top?
He just wants to watch the U of A basketball game.
Chief, you're up.
I promise you, it's not a basketball game. First I butter you up with all the good news, and now I come before you to ask for something. Honorable Mayor, members of council, I believe that this is, really comes as no surprise, this request. In the report to council on the status of the department that I submitted earlier this year in preparation for the budget, most of this information was contained in there. What we're asking for is a part-time evidence clerk to help with the, the logging and so forth of the evidence in the property room. Just as a, a couple of things as a reminder, currently, our evidence unit is housing approximately 23,000 pieces of evidence. And part of the problem with these things is, depending on when cases get adjudicated or destruction schedule, some of that has to be held for a long, long time. So in addition to that, since 1999, we've had an increase of about 738% in our property and evidence intake. Unfortunately, one of the consequences of a community's growth is the, the crime and everything that goes along with it. And so we've had a tremendous explosion in the intake of property and evidence. In 1999, we had one full-time person and one part-time person, and that's what it still is today. It's interesting to note that these are the two, the two individuals that we have now are also the ones that would respond out to a, a major crime scene to protect and then process that crime scene. Then, all the evidence that they collect, they have to go back and they have to log it and put all those things back into evidence. But while they're out doing their crime scene, they can't be doing that on the daily intake of evidence. So it's, it's become a critical matter, and it's expected that our evidence intake will continue to grow by at least 7% every year as our community grows. I believe the administration supports this request, and I'm asking the council to support this request as well. Thank you. Have any questions?
Questions, anyone? No question? I'll make a motion, Mayor. Okay, great. Motion to approve the PVPD request to add a part-time police evidence technician position to staff by electronic vote.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote, Dan? Chief, do it.
Thank you. The Police Department really appreciates your continued support and our efforts. Thank you very much.
We understand your workload is increasing, so keep up the good work. Okay, we'll go on to number eight, public hearing, minor amendment, Joe.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is a request by Robert Jones for a minor amendment to the Prescott Valley General Plan 2025, change of designation from medium-high density residential to community commercial on the remaining portion of Lot 4243 in Prescott Valley Unit 14. The Appken has operated automotive repair business on these combined lots 2243. The applicant has operated automotive repair business on these combined lots 2277, 2278, Unit 7, since about 1993. Zoning on these lots have been C2 since incorporation. They were first designated as community commercial with the adoption and ratification of the General Plan 2020, and subsequently included on the General Plan 2025 update. 1998, the applicant acquired adjacent lot 2266 to the north to park rental trucks as part of the business in which had the same zoning and land use designation, and later acquired another adjacent lot, 4243, to the north, which is in Unit 14 for expanded rental, not realizing the zoned R2. The original demarcation between commercial and residential zoning on the east side of then Florentine Road followed the subdivision boundary between Unit 7 and 14. In 2006, Florentine Road was extended to the east into the Big Sky Business Park, and Lot 4242 in Unit 7 was acquired by the town for this extension, along with the corner of the subject lot 4243. The extension of Florentine Road separated the subject residential lot from any other contiguous residential properties and was the only residential lot south of the new Florentine Road extension. Upon inspections by the town, it was determined that the use on the residential lot for rental truck parking was a zoning violation, and the owners was asked to rezone the property to commercial. In order to rezone to C2, the land use must first be changed to community commercial. A public hearing on the general plan amendment request, along with the request for a zoning map change to C2, was held at the March 9th, 2015 Planning Zone Commission Meeting. After taking comment from the public, the commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of GPA 15001 and ZMC 15002. There was a neighborhood meeting held before that meeting, and one person attended, had no objection. So upon approval of this general plan amendment by council, a zoning map change request would then be scheduled at a council meeting subsequent to this meeting, at following this meeting. So staff supports this request, and that the proposed general plan amendment results in land use being consistent with the surrounding commercial properties. The applicant's not feeling well, is not in attendance tonight, but I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay, this is actually a public, I didn't say it's a public hearings, I declared a hearing open. If anyone has any comments, feel free to bring them up. Council, any questions, comments? It looks good. By the way, in your packet, 9A and 9B are reversed. So, okay, if there's no comment on that, then I would declare the public hearing closed, and we'll go on to 9B. Consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign Resolution Number 1909, approving a minor amendment to General Plan 2025. That's Lot 4243, Prescott Valley, Unit 14. Any questions, comments, motions, promotions?
I'll make a motion, Mayor. Motion to authorize the mayor, in his absence, the vice mayor to sign Resolution Number 1909, approving GPA 15-001, and to sign any agreement under Proposals 207 by electronic vote.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be happy to second a motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, would you set the vote, Diane? And that passes unanimously. Okay, now we're going to go on to C. And I know that's what a lot of people are here, or I suspect this is what a lot of people are here for. Consideration of approving the antenna site lease with the links related to site, sublease between the links and Verizon, or telecommunication facility at Viewpoint Park. Larry, do you have any comments, first of all?
I do, Mayor and council. As you are well aware, and I say well aware because you are abundantly aware of all of the emails that you've received over the last couple of weeks, asking that you support and approve this particular lease agreement. As you are aware, and let me go back in time, the Town of Prescott Valley passed an ordinance a number of years ago that said when cell towers were to be considered to be located in the Town of Prescott Valley, that they would be located on public property, whether it's on town property or school district property, which after a study, made it abundantly clear that there would be great coverage in the Town of Prescott Valley because of the wide variety of public sites, and it was based, that action was based on the belief that the community should benefit from the sighting of these towers, rather than having them scattered all over the place, there'd be some sort of control. Anyway, a number of people have contacted their provider, which is Verizon in this particular case, going ahead and expressing concern over the lack of sufficient coverage on the north side of Prescott Valley, meaning Pronghorn, Viewpoint, and then points north of that. And so Verizon did their own study, they took a look at the Viewpoint Park site as an ideal location for sighting such a tower. There was a community meeting that was held there by the Parks and Rec Commission, there was very adequate support, if you will, or a large majority of the people that attended were in support of the sighting of that facility at that location. With that in mind, that happened quite a while ago, and Verizon has been doing other things, apparently. And finally, they have worked with our consultant, which is All Links, which we have an agreement with, it goes back many years, and they have worked out a lease agreement, and that is the action that is contemplated this evening. An approval of that particular lease agreement with All Links would then convert to a sublease to Verizon, and then Verizon would have the option to put that facility up at that park site. And I know that you have been inundated with emails this week from individuals suggesting very strongly that you should support that. I will share with you that councilperson Mallory, who is unable to be with us this evening, wanted me to share with you that she is very supportive of this particular action, and goes further to say that she hopes that the Verizon facilities are upgraded at the Humboldt Unified School District site there at the high school, because they would like better service in Granville. And so with that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Larry. If council would approve, I'd like to let some of the members of the community speak. I'd like to limit it, is three minutes sufficient? Three minutes. Mr. Zornz, you got any comments? Or Mrs. Zornz? Use the microphone, if you will, otherwise it won't go on tape, or on TV for that matter.
Mayor, we sent our comments to all of you this week. You know how we feel, and I suppose this issue is a dead issue. And the only thing we want from you is a, is just to be sure that whatever they put up on that berm is going to be supported on that berm. That is a small berm, and if they're going to have to expand it, extend it, it's going to mess up our roadways, there's a whole bunch of other things, but there's a lot of people, a lot of children, that are going to be affected from the rays, from the gamma rays and stuff from this tower. And I just wish you would reconsider the location that is actually being put into. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Is Walter Miller Bowman here? Oh, there, would you, whenever you'd like to come up and comment? Good to see you too.
Yes, sir.
You want to pull the microphone down just a little bit?
Okay, oh, that's better. Yes, you must have received our letter.
We did, as we did Mr. and Mrs. Zornz's letter.
Yes.
Very good letters, by the way.
Thank you. It was sort of a consensus, my, we had written a letter addressing a lot of issues and consensus from quite a few neighbors and residents. We attended both meetings, Parks and Recreation at the park and...
Mr. Destry?
Yes, Mr. Destry gave excellent presentation, and the consensus of concern for lack of coverage that really hit home with us was so many parents talking about their children that now have cell phones, and in cases of emergencies, they could not reach home, the parents could not reach the children, and with so many people doing away with landlines, having only cellphone service, that was a, we don't have children at home anymore, but it was a concern to us. We also know a lot of elderly people who are in the same position, and we feel that this is something that's long overdue, and we hope you will give consideration to primarily safety issues for all of our residents in that area.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
We, reason I picked these two, to start with, Mr. and Mrs. Zornz had a letter in favor of, and Mrs. Bowman, Mr. and Mrs. Bowman, you know, rather, Zornz were opposed, and the Bowman's were in favor of, so, and they were very good letters, and very articulately presented. Anyone else want to come, we could take up to three, three people, three minutes each? Yes, sir, come on up. You have to introduce yourself, if you would, for the sake of the micro, or the tape.
I'm Wayne Siderbrus, I live in Granville, and I, we just had our annual meeting, and they were talking about, they, Granville, the Universal Homes, has property that is right next to the water towers in Glassford Hill, and that he was saying that, hey, you need, you people need to say something. So I'm here for the Granville residents, you know, to get better cellphone coverage.
Okay, appreciate that.
And, you know, like I said, he's got the property right there to put it up, and it's right next to the water tanks. So, consider that, too.
Good. Okay, that's a good point. The policy generally has to be on public lens, and I'll have to admit that I would like to see that policy revisited, but for now, we have to work with the policy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, one thing that we end up hearing as town staff on occasion is somebody will call and say that they've had a number of dropped calls, and it doesn't matter who the provider is, and one thing that we need to make abundantly clear, if you are having problems with your cellphone reception, call your provider. Bottom line, the town doesn't have anything to do with providing cell service. We respond as quickly as we possibly can when we get an application to install a new cell tower, whether it's at Viewpoint Park, Mountain Valley Park, which I think we've got five or six different providers, and other parks out and about. If you do have a problem with cell reception, we strongly encourage you, call your provider, let them know that you are getting inadequate service, in your opinion, and it's on them, it is up to the Verizons, the Sprints, the T-Mobiles, et cetera, to go ahead and provide you with the adequate coverage. We jump through all kinds of hoops to go ahead and make that happen. And so, we are aware, and we've received a number of calls about cell service not being up to snuff with a certain provider in a certain area. We strongly encourage your assistance by talking to that provider. There are a number of solutions to that particular one that you identified, and we have a councilperson that lives there that, when I call her, it is forever being dropped. So, thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Hello, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Wanda Corkin, and I live in the Pronghorn subdivision. We have...
Can you pull the mic down just a little?
Sure, thank you. We personally do not have cell reception, and with the huge outage that we had because of the cable being cut down in the valley, if we had had an emergency because of our cell reception being so poor, we would not have had the opportunity to call for an emergency vehicle. My mother lives in Viewpoint, and they too have that same problem. So, she does have a heart condition, and if there was an emergency with her, we would not have been able to contact an emergency person to come to our aid. I really believe that this tower is definitely required. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. And your next, okay, come on up.
Hi, first I want to say thank you for all your hard work. My name is Brenda Hayward, I live in Pronghorn Ranch, and I've spoken at both the Recreation Committee and at the park with my, I am in total support of this tower. One of the things, and I understand Verizon, that it's not your job with the service, but we need you, we need this approved. Verizon, I have called them at least 10 times. They are very selective, with certain people, they will give a free booster to them. My next-door neighbor was given a free booster. They will not give me a free booster. They give some people boosters, other people, they charge upwards of $300. I don't know if this is just a way for them to make money or what, but I do know, when I go home, and I'm driving back into Pronghorn, and I get one mile in, and I've got people pulled over on the side of the road to talk on their cell phones, that cannot, that's not good. When I've got kids, that he said, that need to call home, and they can't get through, nobody, we're dropping calls right and left, and I did have a friend in Viewpoint, whose husband, who has since passed, tried to call for emergency services one night and had to go run to a neighbor's house who had a landline because the calls kept dropping. So it's very important to get this tower in. Technology is at the forefront of everything right now, and this is important to most of us here. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. By the way, almost every letter we got was pro the cell tower. We did get some opposition, but pretty much weighted in favor of, and we do appreciate when we hear from the community.
Good evening, Mayor Scrogg, and council members. Take as least time as I can to hold you up, but I just wanted to let you know, my wife and I moved here in 2000. We built a home in the Viewpoint, we moved from upstate New York, sold the snow shovel and the snow blower and book, and since that time, since 2000, I've been to four meetings following this along, and in the last 15 years, nothing has been accomplished from 2000 until now. All I'm asking is that I've dropped calls, I've had to pay $140 for Verizon for a network extender, they didn't give me anything, they keep taking my check every month, I'm dropping calls. In fact, I have medical conditions that the Lord has called me twice now, and I dropped both calls, so excuse the expression, but I think he said to hell with it. So I'm in a precarious situation here right now. So, oh, I'd like to have a plan or an area where it benefits everybody, you can't please everybody, but where you get maximum cell coverage, and the lady was right, an emergency's going to come up where you're not going to be able to get out to get an ambulance, and if the landlines go down, and a cell tower is not available or for coverage, Verizon and the rest of, they want to put up a generator, they'll give us just about anything we want to alleviate the problem of an emergency getting out to get help. So I'm just asking, please do something to resolve the problem, because we've been toiling with this for 15 years since I've been here, and very little has been accomplished, and I think it's just, we've got to be able to do something better than what we've done in the past. Thank you very much.
One slight problem, we need your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom Russell. I live in the Viewpoint, and we've been here for, I retired from the Air Force for 23 years, with 23 years service.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Yes, I think we have to take one more, and then we'll, we'll call for a motion.
My name is Dennis Olson, and I'm at Pronghorn, and I want to thank you for taking this subject up. I've only been in the community for a couple of years, but I did have to go out and buy a landline. a landline. Now, I'm used to seeing people sit outside to smoke, but in my community, they all go outside to use their cellphones.
Thank you.
As far as notifying Verizon is concerned, I went one better. I drove up to the store and shot the manager, or the messenger, several times, and I've heard a lot of excuses, but we still don't have it. But I wonder why, why don't we have emergency services here telling you how poor this reception is for them when they can respond into our community and they can't use their cellphones? Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, I think we're going to call for a motion. Anyone care to make a motion? Promotion?
I want to do it.
Commotion?
I'll make a motion to approve the antenna site lease with all links for a telecommunications facility at Viewpoint Park by electronic vote.
Mr. Mayor, second to motion.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote, Diane? And that one passes. Thank you, we appreciate your comments.
Mayor? Mayor, if, if I may, before everyone leaves, I want you to know one more thing. Now that this vote has passed, it stands in Verizon's hands to begin building this tower, not ours. I want to make that very clear.
Thank you.
You know who to contact when your next call gets dropped.
Hey, thank you, Ginny. Well, thank you all for coming, and we do appreciate that you, uh, communicated with us your concerns. Okay, we'll go on to, uh, D, consideration of approving Resolution Number 1908, adopting revisions to Town Personnel Policy Number 2-06 through 2-16. Karen? By the way, that was almost a book you gave us.
I know.
And, uh, it's very well done, too, by the way.
I think it is a book, it was like sixty pages long, and it was a lot of work. Uh, first of all, I would like to, uh, acknowledge anyone in the audience that might be part of our personnel board. Uh, as you can tell, a lot of work was accomplished by the board, and so I'm just going to read off their names if they're here, maybe you can stand so we can acknowledge you and say thank you as well. Our chairman is John Duke, uh, also Citizen Darlene Packard, and Citizen Mike Flannery. Yay. And then our alternate citizen is Ron Culver. In addition to the citizens, the board is made up of one exempt employee and one non-exempt employee. That exempt employee is Ryan Judy, and his alternate is Richard Parker, and then non-exempt is Fernando Gonzalez, and his alternate is Jeannie Lacane. So, again, thanks to all of the board members for all of their work. Um, this evening, what you do have in front of you is Policies 2-06 through 2-16. The board worked to just simply adopt, um, revisions that would clarify the administration of these policies and update them in accordance to any federal amendments that have been published since these were originally adopted, uh, years ago. A lot of the, it's simply administrative questions, we get a lot of questions from, uh, staff members, employees, not understanding what the policy was intending, and so a lot of it is simply, again, just clarification of language. Uh, to help expedite the sixty pages, if you read all of them, good for you, but, uh, really, uh, Exhibit C that's attached in your packets is what will be going out to employees to let them know what are the highlights of those changes, and that they'll be asked to then go out and read the electronic versions, sign and remit this to Human Resources that they indeed did read the whole sixty pages, uh, and understand the changes. So, if you have particular questions on the summary sheet of changes in those policies that you'd like me to address, I'd be glad to, but I don't want to take up time if that's not necessary.
Anyone have any questions or anything special? To me, it was very clear, but, uh, I, I'm not an expert on HR stuff.
Very good.
And I did read it, by the way.
Okay.
Anybody else? Laura?
I just wanted to say it's important to know that this does, none of this affects any service to our citizens, and that's really important for people to understand, and you made that very clear in here, but I just want to make sure our citizens know that as well.
Good.
Any other questions, comments, motions?
Yeah, I was just going to mention, too, I think it makes us mo, more productive, I think, as, as far as a town and our employees, when we have updated and upgraded, uh, personnel, uh, policies and procedures, so we appreciate you taking the time to do that.
Certainly.
Very, uh, clearly presented.
Great.
Any other questions? Marty?
No, I'll make a motion.
Okay, you ready?
I'll make a motion to approve, to authorize the mayor in his absence, the vice mayor, to sign Resolution Number 1908, adopting revisions to Town Personnel Policy Number 2006 through 2-16 by electronic vote.
Second, anyone?
I'll second.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote, Diane? Aaron, it's a good policy, good job.
All right, thank you.
Uh, council approves. Okay, we move on to, uh, Number E, consideration of approving Resolution Number 1910, authorizing the submission of an application for Department of Homeland Security FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program, Fire Prevention and Safety Grant Funds. Carmen?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, I'm here this evening to ask, uh, ask your approval in the application of this grant. Um, the Town of Prescott Valley Community Development Department is spearheading a regional collaboration of, um, a few towns, uh, in, in the area, and the CYFD, uh, Central Yavapai Fire District and, uh, Chino Valley Fire District, the Town of Dewey Humboldt, and the Town of Chino Valley, and Yavapai County, um, we're all, uh, getting together to, um, get or ask for grant funding from FEMA for, uh, a civic application. Uh, it's, uh, something that's going to streamline all of our processes so that the firefighters have access to, um, building information, and, uh, we all put our information in the same place. It's a, a great program, and I'm really excited to be able to be a part of the department that's spearheading this, uh, this project, and we're hoping that, uh, we can get some grant funding for it.
Well, you mentioned decreased efficiency, lower overhead, and increased, wait a minute, decreased overtime, lower overhead and increased efficiency.
There's, there's multiple benefits to this, um, to this program for all entities that are participating. It's a, it's a really important and, and huge project.
Good. Questions, anyone? Comments? Anyone care to, uh, make a motion to, uh, to do or not to do?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 9.
Okay, you ready?
Sorry, uh, Resolution Number 1910, authorizing the submission of an application for Department of Homeland Security, FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program, Fire Prevention and Safety Grant Funds by electronic vote.
Okay, a second, anyone?
I'll second.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote?
It's, it's showing E, but it should be F, that's up there, and E is not up there.
I've lost it.
Yeah. Computer is one step behind us, Diane.
Diane, what's showing on our screen is, is as E is actually F on the sheet, so...
One moment, please. I'm working, working. Got it.
Good.
That's better.
Yeah, that's it. No, it's, uh, we have a motion, a second.
Please, thank you.
Vice Mayor? It's, it's reversed, but that's okay. Okay, would you set the, uh, vote, Diane?
Yeah.
That passes unanimously. Okay, we move on to, uh, Number F.
Technology.
Consideration of approving Resolution Number 1911, approving a final development plan, FDP 15-002, for Quellwood Meadows Model Complex for Dorn Homes, and that would be again, Carmen.
What in the world?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, I have for you to consider this evening a final development plan from Dorn Homes for a model home complex in the Quellwood Meadows Master Plan Community. Um, Dorn Homes is the successor in interest to the original developer, which is Empire, and, uh, they're now requesting a model complex, um, through a final development plan in accordance with Town Code, uh, 13-06020. The complex involves two model homes, and, uh, it'll be on four lots, uh, two of the lots will, um, have the homes, the other two will provide parking for the facility. Elevations for you there, um, the model homes offer a new series of residential products for the Quellwood Meadows Development. Staff has, uh, reviewed this plan and finds that it, um, is in compliance with the existing zoning and land use designations, and therefore supports, uh, this, um, this application for approval and adoption of FDP 15-002.
Any questions? Don, Zorn does a, Dorn does a good job. Uh, questions, anyone? Laura?
I don't, but I, I just wanted to make a statement for our citizens out here and our listeners. If we seem to be moving through this very fast, it's because we ask most of our questions and do everything at the work study. By the time we get here, uh, unless there's new information, we don't really have anything to deliberate. We, to repeat myself, we do the really dig-in work on our work study, so we have given a lot of consideration to each item, just so you know.
Any other comments? Marty? No? Okay, anyone care to move or unmove?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1911, approving a final development plan, FDP 15-002, for Quellwood Meadows Model Complex for Dorn Homes by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote, Diane?
You team.
And that passes, thank you. Okay, we move on to Number G, which will be our final, uh, agenda item. Consideration of, uh, authorizing the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Rural Community Assistance Corporation, RCAC, for Diamond Valley Sanitary Sewer District Work Plan Proposal. Richard?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I heard earlier when one of the presentations, somebody said, "Recognize Larry Tarkowski." Has anybody seen Larry?
Hey, hey, hey.
Oh, never mind, I better leave that one alone. Would you stand up?
Standing.
I'm sorry, I had to do that. I apologize, but moving to the item, uh, we previously entered into an, an agreement with the RCAC, and we assisted Yavapai County in residence a couple of years ago in Castle Canyon Mesa, in determining whether or not they wanted to form a wastewater district. Uh, that effort failed, however, we've been approached by residents in, uh, Diamond Valley that would like to utilize the same process to determine whether or not they would like to, uh, install, uh, sewers through the use of a wastewater district. Uh, additional improvements that may include, and would be purely their prerogative to determine if they wanted to pursue also improvements to their water district, uh, using the same process. Deborah Patton with the RCAC is, uh, a wizard in, uh, assisting those groups and trying to help them. Actually, she helped Diamond Valley form the Water District, uh, through RCAC. Um, Ivan's done a great job in going through all the policy directives, uh, that may be on the fringes or directly affect to this action. This is a non-binding action, uh, it will involve my time, and will involve the use of, uh, town facilities to hold meetings. I would recommend approval and, uh, respond to any questions that you may have.
Questions, anyone? Mike?
Well, I was just going to comment, I know we've worked long and hard in that area for, uh, development of a sewer system, and this may be perhaps a precursor to some of the surrounding developments that don't have that, and I think it's a great investment of our time and your direction and expertise that, uh, I think it's something we should pursue.
Well, I'm also pleased to, to let you know that some of the people in the audience are here, they're residents of Diamond Valley, and at your, uh, direction, Mayor, they may want to remark, or certainly if you'd recognize them, ask them to stand, they've been sitting through the meeting waiting for this item as well.
That was my question, I wanted to hear from some of the citizens there firsthand, so...
Okay, anyone want to, we'll give you three minutes, come on up. Come on up, Mike.
Yeah.
It's good to see you, Mike, appreciate your coming.
My name's Mike Schumacher, I've lived in Diamond Valley now for twenty-nine years. I've been telling all my resident, our neighbors, nothing's going to change until we start with this process. I remember when we used to run out of water in the summer months there, you know, and I don't know if any of the members have driven around Diamond Valley, that's a pretty nice community.
That's great people, too, in.
Yes, and I, I think that'd be a, that subdivision would be a nice asset to the town, if we can ever get that far, so, anyway.
I'd say, it's, it is a great community. Other comments, anyone? Questions, anyone? Anyone else want to comment? I think so, come on up. Uh, it looks pretty...
Very shy.
Okay, if there's no, uh...
I do, I have my question.
Laura has a question.
Uh, my understanding from all of this is, this is just a process that, it does not commit us to anything, we're just moving forward with a process.
You are correct, and that process is exploratory. Uh, the beauty of bringing the RCAC is it will, other than my time, um, and the use of town facilities, there will be no additional costs associated with that. Um, the RCAC will help with mailings and doing that kind of stuff, to bring factual information to the community, determine whether or not they would like to form a wastewater district. Having some experience with this, with the Tapodaro area that you all remember, uh, there may be some value at some point in the, uh, in the process for the town to assist the district, if the district is actually formed, to determine how they're going to pay for those improvements. We've had quite a bit of experience, um, in doing districts, such, as you say, CFDs and things like that in the past. But this is not a new process, there's a lot of money, and the reason why we're doing it through the county is because USBA funding, uh, is made available to small communities like, uh, Diamond Valley or Castle Canyon Mesa, and those dollars are not made available to, uh, town the size of Prescott Valley.
Any other questions, Rick?
Well, I think the community has the right to know what, what the process is and, and what they can do, and I'm glad that we're in a position that we can help them, at least get that information to them.
Questions have been many and, and not necessarily unique.
I'm sure they, uh, kept you busy there, Richard.
Little bit.
You ready, Laura?
Motion to approve the attached community work plan with RCAC by electronic vote. Let the motion go forward.
I'll second.
Uh, motion and a second, would you set the vote, Diane? And that passes. Richard, go ahead and help all you can with this program, we appreciate it. And Mike, thanks for your comments. Okay, with that, we have one more, uh, item, and that's, uh, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not ask for permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole, not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes and is additional granted by the mayor. Anyone care to make any public comments? Yes, sir, come on up. Good to see you, appreciate your coming.
My name is Luke Hyde, I live in Granville. I, I brought out some printouts just to give out to the council and the mayor.
Okay, I think we can do that, sure.
All right.
Here, let me help you.
Okay, any other comments?
Uh, yeah, well, the reason I came this morning, or this afternoon, wasn't to complain about my cellphone service, I, uh, I had Verizon, canceled service, and now I have service, I'm, I'm with Sprint, so I'm not worried about that. Um, but what I did come about was the Turn Lane on Glassford Hill. Um, I've been, me and a lot... I've been, me and a lot of neighbors have been talking about why there isn't a turn lane there and we're just trying to figure out. I came in late, so I apologize if this was ever covered in the beginning, but, so I would just like to wonder, I mean, I brought up a few points on it. I brought up the daily average residents and how many would actually be coming through every day as far as use of road and if you're traveling around through Santa Fe Loop and then hitting Tuscany and heading south on it. And then I also brought up ease of use, which just allows the town to flow easier. I personally don't like to leave the neighborhood if I can't get back in easily and just random, you know, going in to get a cup of coffee or whatever. Third point I made was just maintenance on that stretch of mi, you know, stretch of 1.2 miles is obviously a lot more expensive than stretch on point two, point two of a mile. And so, I mean, I just figured, you know, why not bring up the fact that it's probably cheaper to actually have a turn lane there than it not being there. And the fourth part was the emergency vehicles, fire department, ambulance, and one of the points I brought up was that there was actual fire on North Providence Road on January 12th. I was actually just about to watch the game Oregon Ducks against, I think it was Ohio. And I remember driving and I remember watching the fire department drive all the way around to get over there. And the last part is the, the fifth one is just a joke. It's just about pizza delivery and.
Santa Fe.
There. So I just wanted to bring it up and wondering if you guys can possibly look into it in the future. And, I mean, it's something that both myself and quite a few of my neighbors have talked about. I mean, I enjoy living in Granville as a, as a young person, there's a lot of retirees there. And I mean, it's nice to just live in a quiet neighborhood, but it's also nice to be able to get in and out of a quiet neighborhood pretty easily. So I appreciate the time and thank you very much.
I'll be more than happy to answer that, the Mayor and Council. We've had a number of inquiries on exactly the point that you raised. There will be a signal light eventually at that intersection. It will give you a protected left turn onto Tuscany. It is the responsibility of the developer to go ahead and do that. And so when there is development that is proposed on any of the corners, the commercial development and/or on the east side of the road that is more than likely going to be high-density residential, then that will cause a signal light, that will cause the turn lane, that will cause the protected left-hand turn lane. Until that time, then you are inconvenienced by going about a minute and a half out of your way down and over and we understand that inconvenience, but that's what it is, is an inconvenience. An unprotected left-hand turn at that location can be accomplished. We've talked to the HOA about going ahead and funding that in advance of the developer who's on the hook to do it. If the HOA wants to do it, they can do that and be refunded by the developer when one of those corners turns into either high-density residential and/or Circle K kind of thing. Okay, but until that happens, the developer is not inclined to put that in. We've had conversations with the developer to do that because that is his responsibility. And so until that happens, then you do not have the ability to make that left-hand turn. And it surely is a question of convenience. Making a left-hand turn at a protected intersection is significantly safer, we all know that. Okay, going down to the Santa Fe Loop signal light, you're safer when you have a green turn arrow than having an unprotected left-hand turn. And so until that signal light goes in or until the developer would put in a left-hand turn, we have the plans sitting on the shelf to go ahead and do it, okay? It's a question of having the developer and/or the HOA, if they are really interested in doing that and then getting repayment from the developer at some point in time, then we're good to go.
All right, well, I'll take it to the HOA then, my next step then. I appreciate it.
Yeah, we have a meeting with your HOA on Tuesday, I believe it is. You've got a meeting and that has been repeated many times, okay? The story remains the same. There is a solution to it in the short term if the HOA was willing to or interested in going there. But once again, it's a question of convenience rather than one of necessity. And until we're able to make sure that there is a safe left-hand turn at that location, then it's gonna continue to be unavailable.
All right. Thank you, appreciate that and stay in touch. Thank you.
Mayor? I just wanted to mention to you that I appreciate the handout that you brought down. It's a well-thought-out.
Very well done, right.
And it makes it very easy to follow what you're trying to say, so thank you very much for that.
Any other public comments? Yes, ma'am, come on up. No, that's right, any issue, this is open, this is the one time of the meeting, it's open forum.
Thank you. My name's Maria Ginter, it's my husband Jimmy. We live on East Los Flores Avenue.
You'll have to use the, pull the mic down a little.
A little more?
There you go.
Okay, we live on East Los Flores Avenue. We've been in, we've been here for five years. For three of the five years we've lived there, we've been dealing with Mike Young and currently Lee Smith about a rather large code enforcement violation that is across the street from us. There's a man there that is a hoarder and his house and garage is so full that it has now overflowed into the yard, the backyard, the front of the house, the side yard. Every time he is told to clean it up, he makes the smallest of effort. He's got a lot of rock and stone and buckets and he keeps telling the code enforcement officers that it's an ongoing landscaping project. So my whole purpose for being here tonight is I would like to know how long a landscape project can go on without no sign of any progress being made. He has never done anything. It has gotten worse. The other day, he brought in twenty, oh, thirty-nine of these huge blocks. They're now in his driveway, they're in his side yard, there are five-gallon buckets, there are hoses, there are tarps. I have pictures on my phone, I apologize for not having time to print them out because I only just found out about that I could speak at this meeting. What we really want to know is we want to help law, we want to help code enforcement because Lee Smith keeps telling me there's nothing he can do. He's got another inspection tomorrow. This guy somewhat cleans up before every inspection. His truck full of garbage is now parked in front of my house because he thinks if he parks in front of my house, he can't be cited for it. So pretty much I just want to know what's our next step because it's been three years and it's getting progressively worse instead of better. Oh, and he also has, he just put one up last night, he's got about ten black and orange, no trespassing signs all over his house. He put another one up last night and my husband kind of chuckled at it, we were out front and he turned around and he said, "What are you laughing at?" And my husband just said, "How many more are you gonna put up?" He said, "About fifty." No? He said, "I'm gonna put up fifty more." So we just, where do we go? What do we do?
I think we got a letter from you on that effect.
I emailed, I called, I've been through all the processes that I can go through to try and get this cleaned up and this is my last hope.
Well, I appreciate your talk. Any comments? Larry, you got any?
Yes, I received the email yesterday as well and have had a conversation with the Director of Community Development and they will be doing what they can to assist you including the signage and everything else, so they'll do what they can.
Does that mean they're gonna, does that mean they're gonna contact me?
No, they're gonna be contacting the person who is in violation.
Is there any way we can get a record along the books that says an ongoing landscaping project must have a definitive beginning and at least a tentative ending point instead of just sitting there for three years and accumulating more material and nothing ever being done?
If you want a complete definition of the enforcement of landscaping, let me give you the name and number of a person to call. He can give you exactly what it is that you're looking for.
Okay, great.
And, you know, let me give that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else care to comment? If there is no further comments, we have one more item of business that everybody hates and that's to adjourn. Anyone care to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second, would you set the vote? Thank you all for coming.
Don't go away.
Laura, good to see you, huh? Appreciate your coming out. Yeah. There you go.